Mr. Bolden?
Yes, sir.
Would you start us off with a prayer?
Let's do it. Praise the Father, the Lord, and thank you for this opportunity once again to serve this great city. We speak of blessing over this meeting and touch every leader that you've appointed. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. A pledge allegiance
to the United States of which is one nation
one nation
under God
under God
indivisible
being justice for all.
I know it's
Welcome new council member. Uh, how about a roll call, Susan?
Sir. Councilmember Dietz. Councilmember Bolden.
Here.
Councilmember Blevins.
Here.
Councilmember Sansing.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mashburn. Councilmember
Yeah, she's not here.
No, sir, I know. Councilmember Twitty. Councilmember Smith. Okay, Councilmember Rains.
Here.
Answer now, mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm here.
I cannot hear nobody.
Uh-oh. Let me get my There, I can see my pretty face. Hi, Mary.
You hear me now?
Mary, can you
I have lost sound.
Ah, this, you want to watch the city council meeting on this pit bull dogs?
Oh, yeah.
Aunt?
No.
Stone?
Stone's in.
Jim?
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff.
Jim?
Call Twitty Mary.
Calling Twitty Mary. Hi.
I'm getting Mary on the phone so she can at least hear the meeting on my speaker. Mary, I'm calling you.
Hello?
Mary, I'm calling you so you can hear the meeting on my speakers.
Okay, I could hit it all of a sudden. It just went where I couldn't hear.
Okay, but we can hear you.
Okay, but I don't know when to say here and nay and nothing else because I can't hear none of y'all.
All right, so you're here. So you can hear through my phone, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right. So we don't have any minutes to present. Is that correct, Susan?
That is correct. They'll be at your next meeting.
Okay. And do we have approval in the minutes of December 3rd? Hear a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, and uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. All right, do we uh, there anything on the consent agenda?
Don't move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Well, of course, Barbara's not here, so we can't have a youth court committee meeting. And that brings us to the next order of business, which is ordinance sixteen fifty-one. Uh, I would entertain the motion to place ordinance sixteen fifty-one on first reading. Anyone who will make a motion, put it on first read.
Brian?
ordinance. Why do we need to go over this ordinance? Why do we need to appeal it or replace portion of it?
Basically what it's doing, yeah.
We need to place it.
I mean, we got a place of where we can talk about it.
Give me again.
Hey, so I haven't heard a motion.
I'll second.
Rose, rose motion, I was gonna say.
Have a motion and second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Am I voting to hear it?
We're, we're voting for to place on first reading. Councilmember Bolden.
Aye.
Councilmember Blevins.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Nay.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Nay.
Councilmember Smith is not on. Councilmember Rains.
Hi. Ordinance number sixteen fifty-one, an ordinance to repeal and replace portions of Jacksonville Municipal Code, section six zero four zero four five pit bull ban for the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Question on the roll question, Mr. Mayor.
Question on the
Explain to me why we need to repeal or replace portions of this ordinance?
Pardon me?
He, he asked, hold on, I'm sorry, I'm new to this. Am I the one that answers?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
The sponsor of the ordinance is Councilmember Blevins.
Gotcha. So essentially, what has happened is we have a full ban right now, and there's still people that have pit bulls in the city. This right here allows people to have pit bulls in the city under an extremely strict registration process, which is the same registration process that has been accepted in Little Rock and accepted in Cabot. What it, what it has for this extremely strict process means that they have to pay for registration process, has to have three hundred thousand dollars worth of insurance, has to have their dog tagged with a GPS, neutered, and also has to keep it in a protective area. Essentially, right now, we have, we have dogs already in the city, and there's no protection at all. This just allows honest people that want to have animals in the city to be able to have their pets without having to hide them like they're doing now. You're welcome. I also would like to, I also would like to add that I have, you know, again, this is something that is working in the other cities. Like, this is what Cabot has adopted. This is what Little Rock has adopted. I've, I've spoken with code enforcement. They're behind it. Haiti is behind it, as well as we have Chief Hibbs to speak on it as well.
Well, why don't we let Haiti and Chief Hibbs speak for themselves?
Well, the reason why I brought it up, I thought we had everything in the thing when we, when we passed this thing years back. I thought everything was in it. That's what I was thinking. But when it said repeal and replace, that's what I was thinking. We were gonna do away with some of them.
Yes.
Thing, that's what I was thinking.
This will repeal part of it.
I'm all right, I'm all right with it. Let's go.
Get rid of the pit bull ban and allows people under certain conditions to have pit bulls. Uh, Haiti, would you address this matter for me, please? I think, hey, you need to unmute Haiti.
Hit your little button.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm a rookie. Okay, uh, first of all, I would love to see the ban lifted. Uh, we had the ban since July two thousand seven. Uh, started out great. It was new for us, so because I will speak some numbers first. In two thousand and five, we had thirty bite cases with the banned breeds. Two thousand and six, it was twenty-eight. Two thousand and seven, we went to twelve. From there on, we went from three to even one. And I actually checked those numbers because I had to do my end of the year. This year, we had six bite cases with either American bullies or pit bulls. Anyway, banned breeds. Would I like to lift the ban? Yes. Why? Because responsible owners can own a dog they love, will pay the permit fee, and get the insurance they need. But on the other hand, we deal with so many irresponsible dog owners right now. Can we make it work? Because we have more pit bulls or pit mixes at the shelter than a regular breed. So I would like to see this work, but here is the numbers that we picked up. In two thousand and eighteen, we picked up a hundred twenty-nine pit bulls. In two thousand and nineteen
In the city.
In the city. Two thousand and nineteen, we picked up a hundred thirty-six pit bulls. Last year, twenty twenty, we picked up a hundred eighty pit bulls. Because there's no registered pit bulls anymore. We had, in July two thousand and seven, we had a hundred sixty-eight pit bulls registered. They all died because of H. So the last count of pit bulls we picked up was for last year, a hundred eighty. Uh, we're in a new year. We already picked up five pit bulls.
Hmm.
We're on day, what, seven?
Right.
Go there. I don't know what to say with this. Is the time right? Because the numbers are not in our favor.
Would you repeat that?
It's the time right to lift this ban, repeal it, make it legal, because to me, the numbers are not in our favor.
Okay.
The bite cases go up. Uh, we have people that we pick up their pit bull. They either don't claim them, or they say, I will get another one.
Hmm.
So, and I hate it because I would like to see this lifted, so people can have the dog they want, but then there's still so much negativity. I don't want to pay the permit fee, or I don't do the, the insurance. It's ridiculous. So I don't know really what to say with this. I'm just wondering, is the time right? Or does the ordinance has to be rewritten to make it better where it can work?
Do you uh, is this enforceable, Haiti?
Uh, I don't think it doesn't matter how many people we hire, because pit bulls are everywhere right now in the city. We go out when we get a call. We give citations, confiscate the dog, we do search warrants if needed, and that doesn't even work anymore because we got one address that we did a search warrant and they're back again. So it's all about being a responsible dog owner, and right now, I'm questioning that uh, regarding the pit bulls we have right now in the city, because if you want to obey the law, you don't have a pit bull at this moment.
Hey, let me ask you something. Have you been, have you been finding these guys that you picking up these pit bulls, or these pit bulls just running wild on the street?
Uh, most of what we picked up lately are strays. No owner shows up.
Well, this ordinance, this ordinance says that, that any pit bull owner that, hey, you have to pay the big fine. So
Yep.
You, uh, so you know how vicious the dogs are, and this is why this order was passed in all these cities, because we have residents to get attacked by these dogs. And so therefore, that's why we putting this, all this together, where we can try to prevent this. And uh, we can't have the dog run a while, but if we have to, like you have a search warrant, and you get one, you gotta leave a cause to find that person.
Well, they were fined. Uh, they had a search warrant. Police came with us with the search warrant. We got the dogs. They got fined. Whatever happens in court, that's not my part.
Hey, Haiti, my question is that the, uh, the reason that the numbers were so high were not because of incidents, but just because people saw a dog and called on them?
Uh, repeat the question.
If every time somebody saw a dog, they called the police, the number would go up, right? Whether, whether or not the dog did anything.
No, the numbers, the numbers I'm counting are the bite cases. Like, before the ban went into effect, we had sky-high numbers. Then we had the ban went into effect, July two thousand and seven, we went way down to even one or zero bite cases. As of twenty twenty, bite cases are up to six dogs, six banned breeds. Uh, the highest number of bite cases normally with any regular breed, and that's actually the lab mix, it's four. But last year, the banned breed broke the record because it's six.
Haiti, would you repeat those numbers from two thousand and five and two thousand and six on the bites?
Yes, hold on. My glasses are fogging up, sorry. Uh, two thousand and five?
Yes.
Bite cases with the banned breed. It's thirty.
Thirty?
We declared ten dogs vicious that year of the banned breed.
There was thirty in two thousand and five?
Mm-hmm. Two thousand, two thousand and six, twenty-eight, and twelve were declared vicious, and one dangerous.
Okay.
Two thousand and seven was twelve bite cases. One was vicious, and one was declared dangerous in two thousand and seven. And I will, this is the end of the month, uh, end of the year. You guys don't have those numbers yet because I just turned them in, but I will go real quick over the years if you want to, to now. So you know how it went while the ban was in effect. Two thousand and eight, we had three bite cases. And this is just banned breeds, okay? Two thousand and nine, we had three. Two thousand and ten, we had zero. Two thousand and eleven, we had two. Why are you going over there? Two thousand and twelve, we had zero. Two thousand and thirteen, we had one. You still can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Two thousand and fourteen, we had zero. Two thousand and fifteen was zero. Two thousand and seven, two thousand and sixteen, sorry, we had one. Two thousand and seventeen, we had two and one declared vicious. Two thousand and eighteen, we had one. Two thousand and nineteen, we had zero bite cases with a banned breed. Two thousand and twenty, we had six bite cases with a banned breed and one declared dangerous, which was a service dog according to the owner. And we declare, we declared it dangerous because a service dog cannot be aggressive. And that's the count till as of today.
Let me uh, let me, let me say something. Um, to Councilmember Brian and my fellow councilmembers, two years back, you all remember that I sponsored an ordinance for this. And I did a lot of extensive research, got emails from across the United States, even from people who had been mauled by pit bulls. We had the guideline set up. We had uh, about the concrete inside the pen, the insurance. We had all of it laid out. And Heidi, you remember that. We got together to get all this done.
Yes, sir. And the emails are actually, uh, it's kind of a standard in the United States. It's like set up when people get notified where they tried to lift the ban.
Right, yeah.
Because we got the same emails, and I think I didn't got it this time, but Mr. Blevins got the emails this time.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, is that people are not following the law now. They have pit bulls illegally in the city now. So if they're not following the law now, they're not going to follow the laws that are going to be set in an ordinance, and we're going to tell them they have to have this much insurance, you have to have the pit bull put here, or you have to have a chip, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So now you got a snowball effect. Because it's like you said, that's why I asked you to repeat that. The climate right now is not conducive to us to even consider this ordinance, because people are not conducive to following the instructions that are already set.
That's
I was We're not available.
I beg your pardon?
With all due respect, these options were not available.
Uh, well, with all due respect
I think if it's often would have been available, we would have had some people actually sign up and register.
We were gonna do this. That's what I'm letting you know. We, we, we attempted to do this.
Yes.
But when we looked at how many people are going against it already, the first sign of is if anybody's gonna do what we're requesting, is if they're doing it already.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, so, so, so when we came up, when we came up with it before, if they really wanted it, right now, we wouldn't have pit bulls illegal. So let's say, Heidi, you came up and you said, well, uh, the council's been low. We haven't had any incidents. Uh, and I remember Councilman Bolden brought this up, and we had all this, but nobody has uh, uh, has any dogs in the city like that, so they're willing to do it. Now, we got a clean slate. We can give it an opportunity. But you got people already bucking the system with their dogs. And I was in a store one time back when I was trying to push this same uh, ordinance, and standing in line, and they didn't know who I was, and I overheard, they come try to take my pit bull. I know I got four or five of them. I breed them. Okay, well, then you, you, you already said you gonna go against what we try to do.
I had the same call last week, Oldman Bolden. Uh, some guy called. I don't know who it was. We probably were at his door, or because we had a pen handler with a pit bull in town, so we had to direct. And we got a call. One of my officers talked to him. Got a load that you don't want to hear. So I took over. I got the load I didn't want to hear, and I said, you have a great day. Bye. I hang up. I'm, we got called.
And I'm not against pit bulls. I have relatives in Houston that have pit bulls. I mean, it's, so I know how pit bulls came, but again, it's based on the, and they have to follow the rules of the city. So, uh, it's based on the owner of the pit bull, but if you got a owner that's already rebellious against the law.
And I will, uh, give a sample. Today, I had to go to Stonewall because apparently dogs got through the fence. People just moved in, and that was Monday. I guess it happens Sunday night. We then got called out, but they got through the fence, and they just moved there two days before, bought the house, so there you are. Uh, stuck with three pit bulls.
Yeah, yeah.
I went I went
It's illegal.
I went to check on them today. They need time to move them. I would like to give them that time. They're really nice people. The dogs are great. Lick me to death. No, they didn't kill me. They licked me to death. So those people are responsible, didn't know, didn't lie, didn't say, I'm gonna fight this. No, they're willing to move them. They just need the time. I know Jim Moore gonna give them a letter. They have to go because they got complaints. Monday was the first complaint I had on them. The dogs are great. Those are great dogs because of responsible owners. And I had, I had to take them away from them because we are part of doing that. That's why I would like to see this ban lifted, but just at the right time, and this is not the right time. We've got too many people that are irresponsible, and the good ones have to pay for it again.
Yeah.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Can y'all hear me? Um, you know what a brake stick is, Heidi?
Yes.
Is there any, any other dog besides a pit bull that the owners should have a brake stick?
There are several breeds that have a powerful bite. Brake stick, I'm not sure about it. I only had to use my catch pole one time to slam on a pit bull's nose because he had a hold of a bull terrier on Adams Street. She was babysitting her daughter's pit bull, and the lady had a bull terrier. Of course, they're locked up already, uh, so I came to the backyard, and people think the water hose will help. No, it doesn't.
Yeah, no, it doesn't.
So I had to slam on his nose, and he let go, and I grabbed the dog. I took the dog to the shelter. It was moved out of city. They have a powerful bite. Uh, a Mastiff will have a powerful bite. A Rottweiler will have a powerful bite. A German Shepherd can, but it's in different ways. The jaws are just built different. And I'm not a dog expert.
Difference in the way that pit bulls, pit bulls are genetically trained to bite and hang on. Most all other dogs will bite, let go, and multiple bite. And you know that the, all other dogs do the multiple bites, but a pit bull will bite and hang on. That's why a brake stick is required to break the jaw.
Genetic, then it's genetic where the pit bull doesn't even exist because the Staffordshire Terrier came to the United States in the eighteen hundreds, and they came from Europe, just like me, but not in the eighteen hundreds. They came from England. They got split as Staffordshire Terrier. One was a show dog, and one went to the fighting ring, and that's where it started. So, because an English Bulldog is trained on bulls. So there's so many breeds that we are not aware of, but they can kill.
Yep.
But it's just what you know, what you see on the news.
Well, if you go to uh, dogsabite.org and get information, you can get information, and I know everybody can, in the last, in the fifteen years between two thousand and five and two thousand and nineteen, five hundred and twenty-one people were killed by dogs. Three hundred and forty-six of them were by pit bulls. With all the other breeds involved, sixty-six percent were pit bulls.
Yes. Some websites are correct, and this is Mr. Sansing, right?
Yes.
Yep.
I, I cannot see, so I just got my camera off. Uh, there's a lot of websites that will give you correct information. There's a bunch more of websites. It doesn't give you correct information. It's like, we do adoptions, and we do free adoptions, and people are like, oh, this doesn't work. Then we give the information that's online. It's not always correct. But
Okay.
You're correct with the pit bull is really powerful, and it can do a lot of damage. So do other breeds. I've been in this job for sixteen years. I've been a supervisor for, uh, since two thousand and eight. I've seen a lot of damage with dog bites. Not just the pit bull, but like I said, this time, it's not the right time to lift the ban, and that's just what I'm standing by.
Call for the question.
Yeah.
Call for the question.
Motion on the floor currently. Call for a question would be out of order.
Yep.
Okay.
And so, as a proper, uh, so, uh, roll call, Susan.
Sorry, I have no, I have no motion on the floor at this time.
Also, Chief Hibbs is
Oh, Chief, 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 do you have something to say on this?
Please, order is fifteen, uh, sixteen fifty-one on second reading.
That would be approval first, place on second.
Chief Hibbs hasn't spoke yet.
Chief Hibbs, do you have something to add?
Hey, Chief Hibbs, you want to add something?
I don't, I don't have a lot to add. My part is, first of all, code enforcement, um, I represent them too, so I'm gonna tell you, code doesn't write tickets related to animals. Only animal control does that. Uh, though, as far as the police go, we don't write tickets for animal-related crimes either. Only code, I'm sorry, I am a control, however. I, I back Heidi on this, on whatever she needs, and that's my support, um, for, for whatever's decided here is whatever Heidi needs, because we end up backing them up when they have to go to a house to get a, a pit bull or something else out of the house, and the homeowner won't answer the door, open the door, or hand the, the animal over. And so our involvement is supporting animal control on all of these things, and that's what we always do. And so my, my support for this is whatever Heidi needs. That's what I want to support, because that's what we end up in helping them enforce, whether it's search warrants or getting a dog out of a house.
Okay.
My, I, I have not a lot of expertise in this. It's, it, my, 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 my job mainly is, is support role for animal control. They usually call us when they need help citing somebody or getting an animal out of a house, and so I support whatever Heidi needs on this.
All right. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, I have, I have something to enlighten this. It's, it's a little concerning to me, um, as far as the amount of numbers and, you know, the illegal ones that are in the city, uh, that nobody's doing anything about, you know, and, and that's concerning to me. Uh, with that, I think that, um, when the people that, uh, are purchasing these houses, and I'm trying to figure out, and I will come up with some type of solution, but if they're gonna move in Jacksonville, then the only thing that everybody has to have in Jacksonville that I know of is city water. And they have to go get their city water, and I'm gonna think that there's some things that we could do when they sign to get their city water, because everybody has to go over there. It's the only, it's the only utility that they really do. They need to go over there and sign, make sure they're the owner of that property, and that they're signing for the water. I think we need to somehow, as a city and a city council, we need to have some type of form, and I'm gonna come up with that, I guess, with some help, that they are aware of the things that cannot happen in Jacksonville, and having pit bulls at this time would be one of them, and that would put them at notice, and there's some
I would like to say something to that.
Okay.
If I can. If, if you can make that happen, great, because Lakeside Estates is one of our familiar addresses. We go out. They have in their lease, no pit bulls allowed or not disallowed. We pick up a lot of pit bulls there.
Hmm.
Like I said, it's the ignorance or irresponsible owner that doesn't care. Of course, Lakeside Estates has to take care of that, but one thing is, if they call for a pit bull, we don't need a search warrant. Apparently, they can go in their mobile homes and get the dog for us. But
Right.
It's like somebody would move to Jacksonville, you would think like there's so many news about it. Hey, you guys have a BSL, which means Breed Specific Legislation, no pit bulls allowed. Hey, you guys have a BSL, which means breed specific legislation, no pit bulls allowed, but they don't. Or people come like this is a therapy dog. Uh, and they think it's allowed, some things are not allowed under the ADA and people think they are. And that's one of the problems we dealing with right now. People come with pit bulls, it's a service dog. And we cannot touch a service dog for no reason, we can't because it's the law. But some people think a service dog is for everything, it's not, they have to provide a task. So, an emotional support dog or a therapy dog is not covered under the ADA. So you cannot have it in the city limits. And a lot of people have those kind of dogs right now. Which they are not aware because you can buy the things online and it says covered by the ADA, but it's not. And that's one of the big problems we dealing with right now.
What I was putting them on notice is, if, if, when they sign that form stating they're getting their water and they get that letter on there and it states that they cannot have pit bulls, that they're not allowed. All we're doing is letting them sign a form that they're acknowledging that they understand that. And at that, we have a little more legal right to be able to enforce it, is what I'm, what I'm getting at. I mean, because we've got people close houses, well, you've got people that close houses, Heidi, and, you know, they might not know that, they come from other places. I've had people tell me that they can have them in Jacksonville.
And there's only three of those ten people, they will not know it for sure.
Yeah, council member, uh, Dees, what we can do is, we, uh, we can, uh, contact the, uh, Water Commission and see if they can put that inside their stuff.
Yeah, and I think there's some other things that people need to know when they sign for their water too, that would be helpful for them, and I'm just thinking it'd be a list.
I'd trash that.
Yeah, well, that's the only thing that people have to do, I'm telling you, I can get anything done anywhere except getting water on in Jacksonville. I mean, I just can tell you for, by fact, you know, I've been in Jacksonville, our company's since seventy-three, and we have to go over there and let them know. And we have a big deposit up, who's going in the house and for when and why, and then they'll check on it. So the, the Jacksonville water, you know, good or bad, I'm gonna be honest, they do a great job on trying to en- enforce, you know, making sure who's getting that water is the one that's supposed to be getting it.
Does the, does the water department has any pamphlets or flyers like what rules or regulations are in Jacksonville? Because it is a great idea.
That's what I'm saying, we need to come up.
Yeah, we'll check and find out.
Yeah, we, we, we'll get together on that, but I just think that would be a heads up for everybody. So they won't be able to say, well, I didn't know you couldn't have pit bulls, I sell real estate. So I'm just telling you, I've had people tell me from all areas of the country, we're coming to Jacksonville, uh, you know, we got, we got two dogs. I said, great, uh, what type are they? And then I said, you know, we do have a pit bull ban, we didn't know that. So, you know, I'm just saying, it, it, it's, people need to know that before they buy a house, which is.
And the animal shelter flyer we can provide if you need that, it has all the rules and regulations for city license because a lot of people don't know even about city tags.
Heidi, can I make all the suggestion? You get with, uh, get with a couple of the aldermen and y'all get together on it and, uh, and, uh, bring this back to the city council. Table, we'll table this motion and bring it back to the city council and we'll take a look at it, what's wrong with that? You agree to that, Heidi?
Sure. All for it.
Uh, well, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't see the purpose in table it. I feel that we should just research it and then decide what's gonna happen because this is a dead issue at this time, even Heidi said that.
Yes, I told, I told Alderman Blevins that, uh, yesterday morning, I think. I think yesterday morning I said, you have to have a better approach, better research. Because Sherwood doesn't, doesn't allow them, they still have the ban. And like I said earlier, code enforcement doesn't do citations on tickets, it's only, uh, I think sometimes, and it's barely, that the police department would give a ticket on something, but that's just when we ask for help.
Well, that's, that's one reason when I was doing mine for this, I terminated it immediately once I realized the, uh, different research we need to do. And, uh, killed it from that moment.
I think the numbers that Heidi recited of our before-ban bites and our after-ban bites are, are very conclusive.
Yes, it's not like we're not, uh, definitely do our job for sure, I promise.
You definitely do.
But whatever comes in town, I cannot stop. It's like people speeding through a street, I cannot stop. It, it happens, some people ignore the law and that's the bad part. And it's sad because I would like to give this ordinance to the people that are willing to do whatever they. I would pay whatever it takes to get my dog in the city limits. But like I told the mayor, that's only in a perfect world.
Heidi, this is Rose, um, would you happen to have the total bite cases for two thousand and five through twenty? As well, since you have the pit bull bite cases?
The total, no, no ma'am, because I only took the banned breed home.
Okay.
Uh, the total bite cases, oh, hold on, uh-uh, I'm lying. Uh, repeat that question for me.
Uh, total bite cases between two thousand and five and two thousand and twenty?
For all breeds?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, I need to count, okay? And it's late in the day, so I'm getting slow, hold on, two thousand and five till two thousand and twenty?
Yes, since you gave us the data for pit bull bite cases.
Does somebody have, does somebody have a calculator with them?
Just by year, Heidi, do you, Heidi, do you have them by year total?
Yes, does somebody has a calculator because I'm not that quick. I'm go, I'm gonna call you the numbers if somebody can count it for me.
Me just one second.
All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Two thousand and nine is seventy-nine.
Okay.
Two thousand and eight is? Sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
Yes, sir. Let me step in, let me step in the light, hold on. I'm getting old. Okay. I'll start over for you, okay, it's.
You starting over?
Yes, two thousand and five is seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, got it.
Sixty-one.
Got it.
Thirty-nine.
Got it.
Fifty.
Got it.
Forty.
Got it.
Thirty-four.
Got it.
Thirty-nine.
Got it.
Twenty-nine.
Got it.
Thirty-eight.
Got it.
Thirty-nine.
Got it.
Twenty-eight.
Got it.
Thirty-five.
Got it.
Hold on. Twenty-seven.
Got it.
Thirteen.
Got it.
Ten.
Got it.
Twenty-one.
Got it.
That's it.
Okay, so to read this off to you, two thousand and five was seventy-nine total cases, two thousand and six, sixty-one. Uh, two thousand and seven, thirty-nine, two thousand and eight, fifty, two thousand and nine, forty. Two thousand and ten, thirty-four, two thousand and eleven, thirty-nine, two thousand and twelve, twenty-nine. Two thousand and thirteen, thirty-eight, two thousand and fourteen, thirty-nine, two thousand and fifteen, twenty-eight. Two thousand and sixteen, thirty-five, seventeen is twenty-seven. Two thousand and eighteen is thirteen, nineteen is ten and twenty is twenty-one, is that correct?
And I got the breeds, if you want, that are on number one for those years.
Okay, um, is there any way that you could possibly submit that for the next meeting?
Uh, it's submitted, I've turned it in already, you, all the aldermen should have this in their next envelope. Because I turned it in on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, I guess I'd entertain a motion to approve on first reading and place, uh, suspend the rules and place on second reading.
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Council member Deets?
Yes.
Council member Bowden? Council member Blevins?
Aye.
Council member Sensing?
No.
Council member Ray? Council member Trailer?
No.
Council member Twitty?
No.
Is council member Smith on?
Hasn't been yet.
I don't think so. Council member Raines?
Aye.
I have four against and four four.
What?
I have four votes against and four votes four. Yeah, that's a lot of fours. So I have a tie, Mr. Mayor?
I'm not voting.
Thank you, sir.
Need two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, correct? Not just the majority?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, sorry. The motion fails. Thank you, Steph.
Welcome.
Thank you, attorney.
We'll just do, we just leave it stay like it is until we bring it back again, right? I still suggest you put the committee together to, uh, look into it, Heidi, y'all get together and bring it back.
Okay, so it's dismissed for this time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Thank you for all you do, Heidi.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Y'all get with her, y'all get with her and just pass the thing out again, okay? Nothing wrong with it. Okay.
Okay, our next order of business is, uh, appointing council member Trailer to the A and P Commission.
Oh, I still move, Corbin.
All right, get motion singing, all of the members say aye?
Aye.
All of the opposed, nay.
To have it.
Thank you, council member Trailer for being willing to serve. And do anything else to come before this council.
Happy New Year.
Uh, is Jimmy Oakley still on the call? I had something. Is, uh, is Jimmy Oakley still on the call, I was just wondering if, uh, he heard back from Union Pacific?
No, he has not.
No, I have not.
Okay, anything else come from the council? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Welcome.
All right, we're adjourned.